Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Let's start by calling this first Zoom meeting of the East Hampton Village zoning board to order. Jason at LTV has the agenda and he will be posting a phone number to call in if you have comments or objections. And he also said that there's about a 40-second delay, so be prepared for that. First, we have to approve the minutes of February 14th, 2020. If there are no additions or corrections, I'd like a motion to accept the minutes as submitted.
Make a motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, we have three determinations written by our village attorney, Beth Baldwin, after which Ms. Bennett will poll the board. If anybody wants more information, the complete application is on file at Village Hall. The first determination is Edward W. Williams, QPRT, and Lisa B. Williams, QRPT, QPRT from 200 Lily Pond Lane. The application is granted. Ms. Marigold?
Yes.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
Mr. Hillell?
Yes.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Okay, the next determination is Ron J. Vender, 10 Bating Hollow Road. And that application is hereby granted. Ms. Marigold?
Yes.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
Mr. Hillell?
Yes.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
And the third and last one is Nadineia C. Rumbow and Donald E. Handelman as trustees of 8 West Dune Lane. And that disposition of application is also granted. Ms. Marigold?
Yes.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
Mr. Hillell?
Yes.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Now, we have three other things. We have a request for screening approval of the David Andrew Trust Revocable Trust at 27 Windmill Lane. Is the applicant present?
The applicant is currently not on the phone right now, but because of the delay, I suggest that we wait for them to make sure. The phone number is displayed on the bottom of the screen for 27 Windmill Lane.
And it will be Daniel or Alfred calling in?
Pam, the information's also available online, right?
Yes, it is.
Yep. All the files have been scanned by Pam and are available
Correct.
for the public to view online at the town's website, the village's website.
Yes.
What's about it?
With John McGurk not being on the, at the meeting, we're going to have Chris sit on all these, correct?
Yes.
That's great.
Well, we can skip to the next one and go back if someone comes online. The next one is care of the Maidstone premises of Lexington Lounge LLC, 207 Main Street. It's a request to amend a determination. Is the applicant present on this one?
There are currently, oh, one person just came in. Let me go see. Applicant, you are on the air. One second. Mute them and unmute them. One second. Applicants, could you please mute your TV in the background?
There we go.
I have two applicants on the line, and both of you are unmuted. Could you please state your names?
Can you hear us? Hello. This is Daniel and Alfred.
Okay, so we'll go back to, this is the David Andrew Trust Revocable Trust, 27 Windmill Lane.
Yes. Lenny Ackerman is here.
Hello, you have Alfred Wojtowski and Daniel Jeller-Mini from CBT Architects on the line.
Hello. This is Lynn Ackerman on Maidstone.
All participants are muted, and they can unmute themselves.
I'll unmute the two applicants for the first, for this proposal, and then I will go down the line. Thank you. Applicants, you are unmuted.
Hello, you have Daniel Jeller-Mini and Alfred Wojtowski from CBT Architects.
Okay.
You can state your proposal.
Could you repeat that, please?
You can state your proposal. Sir, do you want to tell us why you're here for 27 Windmill Lane?
Yes. As part of the condition to build the garage and the accessory buildings, we need to submit a screening plan to the zoning and planning boards. So we have submitted that screening plan to your board for review, for adequacy of screening.
Okay. So you're putting the garage in the far-left corner?
The northeast corner of the site.
Right. And is there enough turn room to get back onto the driveway?
Yes. Yes, there is.
Okay. And I assume all the other violations are cleared up?
That is correct.
Okay.
Billy, you saw the, you saw the planting plan, correct? You're okay with it?
What was submitted is not necessarily a planting plan. What was submitted is an existing conditions plan. And I think the applicant's point is that there's adequate screening currently for the, that supports constructing, constructing the garage and the poolhouse. So they're not proposing to add anything new. They're just showing us that, or they're showing the board that there's adequate existing screening.
Okay.
There's the high fence and there is, that great big tree is going to stand in that corner?
I don't know about the tree, but there's an existing fence.
Right.
All of the trees are staying in place. We've designed the buildings around the trees so that beautiful cherry tree that's well over 100 years is staying.
Oh, that's good. I was worried about that.
Yeah, it's absolutely beautiful tree. So it's been, all the buildings have been designed around the roof system.
Well, you've had letters from various landscapers all commenting on your non-use of pesticides and your care for the earth, which is certainly a positive. Is, so there are no other callers? Is there any, you know, Ray, you want to say something or?
I'm okay with it, the way they.
Pardon me, there are a few other callers on the line. If I can unmute them to make sure that they, I have nothing to say?
Okay.
Applicants, please mute your TV in the background. Caller?
I'm for Georgia Corrode, that application. Sorry.
Okay, understood. We'll keep you muted until your thing. And we have another caller on the line?
Yeah, this is Lynn Ackerman. I'm on for the next matter, Maidstone.
Okay, understood. Thank you. And there is one more caller on the line? Okay, they're not responding. I will mute their microphone. Thank you very much.
Okay, Larry, do you have a comment? You're muted.
Oh, one second.
Larry, you can repeat yourself. You were muted. No one heard what you had to say.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I'm okay with it.
Okay. Craig?
I'm fine. I think we've been through this property before, and I've always been impressed with it. And the supportive letter this time is a beautiful letter, so I have a problem.
Okay, and Chris?
Yeah, I agree with Craig. There's plenty of screening, and I think they did a good job. So I'm okay.
Okay. So do I have a motion to close this?
So move.
Second? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now we will go to the Maidstone, and we do have the applicant present.
I will unmute their microphone. Applicant, you are unmuted. Applicant, you are muted.
Yeah, this is Lenny Ackerman. Are we ready for Maidstone?
Yes.
Yes. Morning, Lenny.
Lenny, please unmute your TV in the background.
Well, does that mean you want me to turn off the sound?
Yes.
You want me to turn the sound off? Yeah, okay. All right, and just listen on the telephone, correct? Basically, that's, yeah, okay, I got it. Thank you, I'm sorry.
Okay.
First of all, I, I'm appearing on behalf of Maidstone. However, I just want to compliment Pam Bennett for all the effort and work she's done to bring this about. I think this is a tremendous achievement, and I want to compliment her and Becky Malinari and the entire board of the village for working so diligently to bring village government back to this operational level. Now, with respect to the Maidstone, this morning, we received objection letters from several neighbors, and I'll refer to the chair on this. I think we've adequately addressed these concerns. It's our position that there's no need to have a fence under common ownership. I believe that the owner of the house and the owner of Maidstone, both being beneficial owners, have a right to enjoy, you know, their property undisturbed. The pretext on which this application is made is basically that in the event that there is single and separate ownership unrelated, then of course, a fence could be installed. But considering the basis and the history of this application and how this determination was made, which we're seeking to amend, I think it's reasonable and sensible to allow the properties to be open and undisturbed.
Okay. Well, until we got those letters yesterday, I actually thought, you know, it was a slam dunk, no problem and everything. But I do understand the neighbor just to the south who's worried about, you know, this disturbance. And I think this is like the start of an opportunity. It's up to the village board at some point to make a balance between the historic ends and the historic neighborhood. A six-foot double fence with noise baffling does seem to me, since they are in the same ownership, as, is a little bit over the top. I mean, we didn't require that for the 1770 house, which is what this is based on as far as outdoor dining. But they bring up a valid point, that it shouldn't be commingled. I think Darrell Westfall had used those words. And, you know, Ray, what do you think about that?
I'm in agreement with you. I mean, if there could be some type of separation, I think would be good. I don't think it should just be, you know, free, you know, free-nilly, you know, walking back and forth. I think there should be something there.
Yeah, maybe a poster, a fence, or I don't know. You know, some separation, but.
What I'd suggest to the chair, then, we, I'd like to put it over, let me consult with the client based upon, you know, the comments of the board, and we'll then come back to you with a response.
Yeah, some reasonable thing to separate the two without it being, you know, so tall and so looming over everybody, so.
I understand. So could we put this over to the?
Yeah. Do you have a comment, Ray?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The concern, to put up the fence is not a concern of the owner, because the owner is both places. It's for the neighborhood.
Well, it was originally for the, there was a, there was a separate owner when this went through the court system. So it was a protection for a totally different neighbor, which I think Mr. Ackerman's made in his summary.
Yes, that's correct. That's correct.
Larry?
I agree. I think there should be some separation. One's residential, it's in a residential neighborhood, and I think there should be a separation.
Okay, and Chris, we'd like to hear from you.
Hey, Liz, I agree with you. I was okay with this, but as per the letters and the board's direction on this, we can, you know, we can adjourn it and see, you know, where we go with this.
Okay. All right, so do I have a motion to adjourn this, this application?
Motion.
Second? All in favor?
Second?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Mayday. And the last one is the application of Pond Acquisition Corporation at 291 Montauk Highway. Is the applicant present for this one?
I will unmute. We have a few new callers on the line. Caller, you are on the air. Hello? Caller, you are on the air.
When you unmute, you talk to everybody. It's, I'm not here for the Pond Acquisition.
Understood. Thank you. If you could call back for your application, that would be best. Thank you. I have a few people on the line that I have to work down.
Okay.
Thank you. One second.
I believe it's Mr. Ackerman again.
It's Mr. Ackerman again?
No?
No, it's not.
No.
I have an adjournment on Mullen for a full hearing. It's set forth in my letter request.
Okay.
Caller, you are on the air.
Samantha Thompson and Emily Hatch?
Okay, I have one Thompson calling in. Let me just make sure.
Hi, this is Samantha Thompson.
Good morning.
Morning.
Would you say what you would like to do?
Yes, so we, as per the ZBA determination from April 2018, we were instructed and we're in the process of installing an upgraded septic system for the entire property at 291 Montauk Highway. Given, as I'm sure, as you all know, we had kind of a catastrophic fire that pushed all of our items for a number of months. And now we are also, sorry, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm following along on my computer, and the text is a little confusing. But, and then in addition, with this pandemic, we are also, you know, currently in a position where we're unable to complete the installation of the septic system at this time. We are in the process, and we have ordered all the materials, and we have a number of the, we're trying to keep contractors coming to the property, but just given safety concerns, distribution, manufacturing, and labor delays as a result of the pandemic, we are requesting an extension to, at this point, we believe that reasonably we can complete it by June, by the end of June, given the current state of things. And it is quite fluid, but we are, we are hopeful that we can get it installed by Friday, June 26.
Yeah. I think that's perfectly reasonable. Craig?
That's fine.
Yeah? Ray?
I have no problem. If they put in a new system, I'm all for it.
Okay. Larry?
Okay.
And Chris?
No choice.
Absolutely.
No problem. Okay, so do I have a motion to accept?
Great.
Make a motion.
Make a motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All right. We have two requests for adjournments. One of them is Nicole and Alan Salmasi, right here on 73 Davis Lane. Seems to me, I think, I think to Pam, this is the fifth request for adjournment. I think if they want to adjourn the next time, they have to start all over again, but this is just a warning. And the second one is Donald R. Mullin, Jr., 67 Cross Highway. We can have a motion to accept the adjournments?
Take a motion.
Second?
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so now we're going to the, I guess, the continued hearings. The first one is James D. Danella, 49 La Forest Lane. Is the applicant present?
Yes, Lenny Ackerman again. Liz, you have, you have my April 20th, 20th letter, in which I indicated that we've reduced the request to 470 square feet, first floor, 248 and 222. I've also added a substantial mitigation offer here based upon the fact that we have filed with Drew Bennett an application with respect to the additional bedroom that was not covered under the prior Health Department approval. And based upon our interpretation of the code section, 233-2, septic permit requirements, we would not, without this offer of mitigation, be required to upgrade to a low nitrogen IA system. And I think that offer of mitigation should be seriously considered as a reasonable offer by the board in granting this application.
Okay, well, speaking of that letter, there are a couple of things that I disagreed with. You know, I have talked to Ken Cullum about the history of this house, and, you know, the, the letter states categorically that they are entitled to it because it's a pre-existing non-conforming, whatever. But in truth, the history of this house was that it was a very small cottage, and they asked for renovation. And instead of just renovating, they built this rather large and lengthy house because the way the property is done, it, the house goes practically from one side to the other because it's sort of a pie-shaped lot. And it was over the GFA, and so they designated part of the second story as attic and storage space. And then it sort of morphed into bedroom and bath space. So it wasn't totally a clean thing. And I also reached out to Beth Baldwin to find out if indeed we had to start at the higher number of GFA or whether we go with the approved village number. Beth, could you weigh in on this?
Sure. It's always been my opinion that in the situation where you have a non-conforming building and they are then asking for a variance, that the variance is actually the difference between the, what is permitted in the district and what the applicant is asking for, not what the applicant has per their pre-existing number to what is they're asking for. So I disagree, Lenny, with your letter as far as how you're calculating the variance. I think Billy's notice and how everything has been calculated is, is the substantial difference is the, or the difference is between that. I think you can consider, and the board can consider, when they're reviewing an application and reviewing the substantiality of a variance, the board can consider what the pre-existing number is when they're looking at it. But as for actually calculating the variance request, I believe it's the, what is permitted in the zoning district and what is asking, so.
Right. And what number do you, what is your calculation, your percentage calculation?
I don't have that number. I mean, Billy, I'm sure.
I do. It's 25%.
There you go.
Because you're, you're asking for 7071 versus a max of 5679. And also, I have another issue. In the proposal, it says existing is 6417. In your write-up, you're saying it's 200 square feet higher.
Six, six, one, yeah.
Right, so I think there's a discrepancy, but again, you're talking about 25% variance of the current max, and I think that's substantial.
Okay, well, obviously, we, obviously, we disagree, we disagree on the law, and that's why we have, that's why we have courts to make a final determination. I, I don't think you're correct on the law, Beth, but I don't want to argue the law now. So whatever your determination is, you know, let's close the hearing, make your determination, and let, you know, we'll move on. I understand it. I disagree, but I, I don't, I don't understand how you could get to such an incredible number when historically, with all the precedent, we've always based the increase on what was pre-existing non-conforming.
Now, now we haven't. No. Talk to, talk to the building inspector. We have not based it on that.
And I think that's a, that's something that the board can always consider when they're making a determination, but when you're putting out what the actual variance is, I think it's that, the difference between what is permitted and what the applicant is asking for. Absolutely, the board can consider that there's a pre-existing number here, and that could calculate into the substantiality of it. But as for actually what the request is, I think it's the difference between what is permitted versus what they're, what you're asking for.
Okay. All right, well, you'll write the determination as you write the determination, and we'll go from there, I guess.
Yeah.
I think the board can still review the application. I don't, I think that was just one aspect of it.
Right, right, right.
I'd like to also clear up something that keeps popping up in your letters, which is that since it's behind a high hedge, you know, it's, it doesn't matter in the neighborhood. I totally disagree with that. I think the village code is valid, whether it's behind a high hedge, whether it's on a flag lot or whatever. Just because you can't see it, it doesn't mean that you can do whatever, you know, build whatever you want. So that's my two cents.
I agree with that. This business that you can't see it, therefore you can do it, I don't like that at all.
Okay. Ray, do you have a comment?
Yes, the code is the code, and whether you can see it or not, doesn't make any difference to me.
No, I understand. Larry, can I just respond, Liz, can I just respond to Larry's point about the extra 200 square?
Of course you can.
Yeah, that, that comes about because of the recalculation of double-height ceilings. Also, I wish to point out that all these improvements that Ken Cullum has referred to, Liz has referred to, a reference, were done by the prior owner. And in, in the purchase of this house, the present owner and the present applicant relied upon the CVO that was granted, which gave us a starting number of a pre-existing non-conforming GFA. And that's the basis on which we're making the addition.
Yeah.
And it's nearly, it's 470 square feet. It's, it's not 25% expansion. I mean, that, that poisons the well when you use a term like that. It's, it's 470 square feet over what's existing. But I understand that's your position, and we'll, we'll have to, we'll have to review it after we get the determination.
Okay, Ray?
Should we close the?
Not yet. I want to hear from my vice chair.
Oh, sorry. Sure.
I have to recuse myself, ma'am.
Oh, right, you have to recuse yourself. Sorry. Too bad. All right, and Chris, you're not on this because it's a continued hearing. So, all right, let's make a motion to, should we close the hearing, Beth?
If the applicant doesn't have anything else, you can, you can close the hearing.
Okay. All right, a motion to close the hearing?
So move.
Second?
All in favor? Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so now.
May I ask, Liz, can I just interrupt for a second, please? So, so who's voting on this? I'm sorry, who's voting on this?
Well, it's me, Larry, and Craig, there are three of us, because John McGurk, who was sitting on it, isn't on today because his father is, is not well.
Oh, I see.
So it's three.
All right.
It's the only, the only three of us.
Okay, I got it.
Okay, so another continued hearing, our, we're, which we're doing together, is Zay and Zon on Chauncey Close. Is the applicant present?
Yes.
Chauncey Close?
Lenny, actually.
Okay. And this is a.
As I noted in my April 15th letter, Rich Warren's office, Inner Science, and the Grimes team worked very diligently with the buffer plant, and we've accepted the conditions and recommendations of Billy Hayjack in his most recent memo. So I believe we're prepared to move forward with this application and close the hearing.
Okay, well, we, we defer to Billy on this one. Billy, do you have something you'd like to say?
I, I think the plan was amended. I, when I, I met with the applicants on a number of occasions, we reviewed the plan multiple times. They were receptive to making changes and incorporating my suggestions, and I'm pretty satisfied with the latest plan that's before you right now. As long as they're agreeing to the conditions of approval or conditions that I recommend on the project, I have no other concerns with, with it at this time.
Good. Then can we close the hearing?
Motion, close.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, then we'll have a termination in the next meeting. Now we turn to the new hearings portion. Next is the application of Georgica LLC, 283 Georgica Road. Ms. Bennet, will you read the, the notice?
Yes.
Pam, we can't hear you.
Oh, sorry. Am I good?
Yes.
Much better.
Application of Georgica LLC, Suffolk County Tax Mat Number 3011221.1 for area variances from Chapter 278 zoning to reconstruct with alterations a pre-existing and non-conforming accessory building. Variances are sought from Section 278 3D1 to reconstruct with alterations a 1,964-square-foot accessory building containing multiple rooms where accessory buildings are limited to 250 square feet in gross floor area and cannot contain more than one room. A 1,986-square-foot variance is requested from Section 278 3D7 to permit the reconstruction of an accessory, of an accessory building where the combined gross floor area for all existing accessory buildings totals 3,564 square feet, and the maximum permitted accessory building gross floor area for this lot is 1,578 square feet. The subject property is 115,736 square feet in area and is located at 283 George the Road in Residence District R80. This project is classified as a type 2 action in accordance with CEQA.
Chris, you're going to be sitting on this also?
Yes.
Okay. Is the applicant present?
Yes, Michael McCaffrey for the applicant on Georgica. I'm the architect for the project.
Would you like to describe what you were planning to do?
We have an existing accessory structure which had, which had a badly deteriorated roof that had been used to store artworks of Susan Tepper. And the, in looking at repairing the roof, it was, it came to, came to light that the structure was minimal and not, not capable of supporting the new roof. If we had to structure the new roof, we would have to have stronger walls to hold it up. We had the stronger walls to hold it up, which we felt we could do under a kind of a repair in kind. We would need a new foundation to support the new walls and the new roof because it's so much heavier than the 2x4 construction that's there now. So basically, the, putting in the foundation wall or a new foundation wall to support the, the walls and the roof of the building, that is the, the, basically, the alteration that kicked us into the zoning board of appeals. We're not looking for any, you know, to expand the footprint, we're looking, we'd like to have exactly what we have back again, but it's 17 feet high, and the zoning precludes that to be on 14 feet. So to be in a smaller degree of nonconformance, we're suggesting that we reduce the height to, to 14 feet. We, we know we're over the area, but it's an existing non-conforming CVO legal space. And in addition, since we're obliged to undertake, you know, a great volume of work, we also, at the same time, wanted to put, to make a cellar under the building because if, you know, for zoning square footage, it doesn't, it's not counted. And it will allow us to, to separate the storage that had been in the barn, which was the Susan Tepper artworks that she, you know, she had used that barn building as a studio throughout the late 70s and early 80s. And since she passed away in early 1991, the paintings had been stored in the building. When the roof problem came to light, the artwork was removed and cleaned and restored. It's being stored off-site now, but the hope is to bring it back and to put it into, back where it was, into the, the room where it was created. We also use that space to store seasonal furniture, which goes in and out every year and threatens to damage the artwork. And that is, we want to separate the storage of that frequently moved bulky furniture from the artwork. So that's why we include the cellar as part of the application.
Did I hear you correctly that the artist is passed away?
Yes.
1991, right?
She did pass away in 1991. She had started the East Hampton Artist Collaborative in 1985, which is still in operation. And interestingly enough, after the cleaning, there was some, some new interest in the artworks. And if you wanted to see them, you could go to the East Hampton Library in August, where there'd be a show of Susan Tepper artwork.
Ray is our resident builder. Would you like to weigh in?
Well, I just want, I just want to make sure that it's only going to be used for storage, for one, that there's no living or anything like that in there.
No living, just storage.
Okay. Is it going to be, it's not going to be heated and, and cooled, correct?
I think it has to for his artwork.
We want to, we want to create a sort of a space where the art won't deteriorate. It's, you know.
Right, what is it going to be used for? Besides storage?
Storage of the artwork. Storage of the seasonal furniture.
Okay, so it's not going to be used as an art?
Yes, the daughter of the applicant has expressed an interest in painting. It, maybe it runs, maybe it's in the genes, but she might want to use the space as an art studio. She's, she's a teenager now, but, you know.
Hey, Ray, how was your review of their construction protocol and the applicant's description on what they were doing with the roof and, and the basement? How did that sound? Again, you're the builder.
Yeah, no, that's, that's all okay, for sure. You know, I'm, I'm concerned with heating and cooling because if this is a storage building, it shouldn't be insulated, and sheetrock, it should be, you know, unfinished.
But, but if you have art, don't you have to have the right temperature in winter or summer, otherwise it gets destroyed?
Can we put something in the, can we put something in the determination that maybe it's conditioned for the sake of preserving artwork? However, you know, it's not limited to, you know, occupancy of some issue, I guess. And I agree with Ray, but, you know, I, I think we might have to allow them, I mean, to store artwork. We've done that before.
Yeah, but, you know, they could also store artwork in the basement. That could be, they could have a room that's humidified in the basement, and then in the, the main part of the building, not have any finished walls.
My concern is this turning.
The CVO says that the building is air-conditioned, and it does have a heater, but it was determined that the heater should not be used. I don't think we're asking for an expansion of what we already had. It did have an air condit, it has an air conditioner now, which it has the CVO for.
Yeah, yeah, but once you're taking it down.
Right.
It's not, the things are no longer valid.
I'm not looking for more than I already have. I'm just looking to get back what, you know, and a proper art storage space. I mean, really, it's, it's not usable as art storage if there's, if it lacks heating and cooling. It just won't be, it's not, it's not appropriate.
Well, as, as I said, if it's for storage of art that you want to preserve, you have to have the proper heating. And, but I think we have to limit it that it's just for storage and nothing else.
I agree with Larry. I don't understand why we can't allow them their proper climate for the, for the artwork and just make it very clear in the determination that it's a storage space for artwork.
And other furniture? Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I was only suggesting, because I know other places that they carved out part, a, a part of it and had that room sort of humidified or dehumidified, and then the rest of it was left kind of in a rough state, but it's up, it's up to you.
There's an awful lot of artwork. It, it was pretty filled to the gills with artwork, and that's why it made it very difficult to move the seasonal furniture in and out, you know, putting the artwork at risk.
Is there anybody that wants to call in on this one?
I have a few more callers on the line. Let me unmute them accordingly.
Hi, I'm Rick McMaster.
Yes.
And, oh, callers, could you please mute your TV in the background?
My TV is muted right now. This is Rick McMaster. I've been working on the property since 1979.
Give me a second. All right.
Sure.
It was one of the other callers. Thank you for.
That's okay.
Hello?
Hello?
Go ahead, Ray.
Hi, I, it's Rick McMaster. I've been working on the property since roughly 1979, 1978, when my father introduced me to Ariel's mother and father, and was part of, I was fortunate to be able to see her doing her artwork while she was working in the art studio. And prior to them purchasing this land, it was a working farm, and the structure that we're referring to right now, I think it used to house the cows or horses that were particularly on the farm at that particular point in time. Martin Tepper then renovated that back in, I think, 1977 for his wife to be able to do her artwork there. And through the course of many, many years, as Mr. McCaffrey was just saying, that we, it's gone to disarray. And the art that was there, if I'm, if my memory serves me well, it's near 400 pieces of art, ranging in size from probably 2x2 up to 6x8-foot pieces of art, which is pretty amazing, if you ask me. So one of the issues that we had been having on that particular piece of property was, for a very long time, when the process of renovating the main house, the garage, and et cetera, we left the studio for last because we weren't sure what was going to happen to it. I know that Ms. Tepper wanted us to resurrect it as her mom's art studio so that therefore she could still have her children be able to go in there and do some artwork in there. So hence the reason why it was, has always been heated and air-conditioned, one, to save the art, but also so that they could go in there and do this. We, I think, Michael McCaffrey and I, and also Brian King, who is the builder, we were wanting to be able to use the space down below to be able to use a acclimated system to be able to preserve the art in the basement, and then therefore, portion of that, and then the storage, either it could be upstairs or downstairs for the furniture. I don't, have you all seen the property at all?
Yes, we all, we all have gone to it there.
Okay. I mean, as long as it's not, you know, a sleeping space, I'm okay with it.
Okay, Chris?
Yeah, I agree with Ray. I, as long as it's not a sleeping space, we can note that in the determination, but I have no problem with allowing them to condition it for artwork and storage.
Craig?
Well, I've seen, I've seen the property, and it needs a lot of reconditioning. I had, so is it going to be completely torn down and started again?
Yes.
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 That's what, that's what, that's why we're here at the zoning board of appeals. Because we're a foundation.
What are the rules on a non-conforming structure being improved?
That's why he's getting the variances.
Yeah, I mean.
So it's the same.
When it's being torn down, it doesn't have any more pre-existing non-conforming because it's not pre-existing anymore. But we're, if we do grant this variance, we're giving them permission to rebuild because the timbers are all rotted out and it's going to collapse, basically.
And they are lowering the height of the ridge, which is.
Right.
Now, I have a question. We're saying that there could be proper temperature, proper temperature all year round, and are we saying that it also used as a semi-art studio or just for storage? We have to think, we have to clarify that.
Using it as a studio would be a non-conforming use. Only can be used for storage per zoning regulations. However, the current CVO calls it a studio and gives it the ability to be used as an art studio. Because there's a daughter who has an interest in becoming an artist, question mark, who knows about teenagers, we'd like to be able to continue that non-conforming use of art studio as well as storage. If that, I don't think it would be too much of a stretch, and I don't think it's too much of a probability that it would be, you know, a, a great studio for, for, for a long time. I just want to keep open the possibility at this point.
Okay, well, I'm for, all for encouraging young artists, so I, I would be fine with that.
And Beth can certainly put the wording in the, in the determination, I would assume, right?
No problem.
Yeah.
Okay, do I have a motion to close this hearing?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good. Moving right along to 34 Darby LLC at 34 Darby Lane. Ms. Bennet?
Thank you very much.
Application of 34 Darby LLC, number 301, 81217, for variances from Chapter 278 zoning to alterations and construct in addition to a pre-existing non-conforming residence. Variances of 28.9 feet and 6 feet are requested from Section 278 3A 4A to make all the. Take alterations and construct an addition for pre-existing, non-conforming residents. Variances of 28.9 feet and 6 feet are requested from Section 278 3A-4A to make alterations to an existing residence located 21.1 feet from the side yard lot line and constructing additions 44 feet from the side yard lot line with a required setback at 5 feet. The subject property is 96,506 square feet in area and is located at 34 Darby Lane in Residence District R80. This project is classified as a type 2 action in accordance with SEQA.
Pam, could you repeat the last part? We didn't hear you.
This project is classified as a type 2 action in accordance with SEQA.
One more time? We cannot hear you.
This project is classified as a type 2 action in accordance with SEQA.
Okay. Is the applicant present?
I'll unmute.
Lenny Ackerman? Yes. As I've indicated in my letter of April 15th, this is a de minimis application. It's a lovely restoration by Mrs. Rayner. They're installing a chimney and a small renovation to the kitchen. I think this should be recognized as a very sensible variance application and the least amount of variance necessary to achieve this restoration. Thank you.
Yeah, it's a beautiful property. I know its history and I always have, I have a soft spot for this property. And it's unfortunate, the house was sited very close to the side property line. And it has a big lawn and a swimming pool that looks like it's part of a grotto from some Italian eighto. And the old owner lived up over the swimming pool. And so this was sort of a second house on the property and then they split it. I have no problem. It's, you want to install a large mantelpiece, right, in the library?
Yes, that's right.
Okay.
That's correct.
Ray, would you like?
I have no problem with it.
Craig?
Oh, this is fine. That's quite a kitchen they're going to put in, but I have, it's a little proof of the house.
And Larry?
Oh, I'm okay with it.
And Chris, what do you say?
I'm okay. You know, everything is being done to the interior of the property, not to the sides. And they seem to screen the air conditioning units well and the property is screened in. So I don't have any problem with this either. Thank you.
Right. And I think it's the first time the applicant has come to us ahead of time instead of asking forgiveness. So with that, we are very grateful, Mr. Ackerman. Is there a motion to close this hearing?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay. Next, we have, next and last, we have 49 Hunting Lane LLC, 49 Hunting Lane. Ms. Bennet?
Application of 49 Hunting Lane LLC Suffolk County Tax Map Number 301-812-17.
Ms. Bennet, we cannot hear you.
Pam, you have to speak up.
Or your microphone, something.
Application of 49 Hunting Lane LLC Suffolk County Tax Map Number 301-812-17 for area variances from Chapter 278 zoning.
Pam, I'm sorry, we still can't, we still can't hear you. There might be something wrong with your connection.
Does anyone else have the notice? Maybe they can read it.
I have the notice. Would you like me to read it?
Yeah, maybe Billy can read it.
Is that okay?
Yes.
Read it, Billy.
Okay. Application of 49 Hunting Lane LLC Suffolk County Tax Map Number 301-3-8-9.2 for area variances from Chapter 278 zoning to construct a swimming pool and patio. A 9.1-foot variance is requested from Section 278-3A-5B to construct a patio 0.9 feet from a side yard lot line with a required setback as 10 feet. An 18.8-foot variance is requested from Section 278-3A-5C to construct a swimming pool 1.2 feet from the side yard lot line with a required setback as 20 feet. A variance is requested from 278-1A to permit the construction of an accessory structure on property without a principal building. The subject property is 16,541 square feet in size and is located at 49 Hunting Lane in Residence District R40 and the Hunting Lane Historic District. This project requires approval of the Village Design Review Board and is classified as a type 2 action in accordance with SEQA.
Is the applicant present?
Yes, Lenny Ackerman. As I said forth in summary in my April 15th letter to the chair and to members of the board, we've located this in both a conforming location as to any future development of the property, either as single and separate lots or as merged lots. And, you know, I think this is an opportunity, again, as we've done in the past with tennis courts, where this applicant is satisfied at this point in time to having just the pool and not being forced to develop a single-family primary or secondary residence unnecessarily just to satisfy the zoning code. So I think that's sensible application and the least amount of variance is necessary to reach the goal here. Thank you.
I think when you moved it, the first go-around, it was so close to the property line that I think everybody was shocked, like, what is going on there? But when you moved it to the center into a conforming location, we've also previously accepted children's playset on that property as a separate, without building on it. So I don't have a problem with it now. But Ray?
I agree. It's much better moved.
Now, obviously, the property never could be sold. It almost has to be part of the contiguous property. Because if it is, it can't be sold separately, can it? Should that be a stipulation?
Why can't it be sold?
That's not our problem.
No, in other words, if it's sold, if I just buy it, or I'm a third party and I just have a swimming pool there and nothing else, is that fair? It's almost like a recreation facility.
Oh, but Larry, we don't have to look to the future because actually I think it can be sold and a small house built on it. But that really isn't our concern.
I agree. You can't limit, Larry, you can't limit the alienability of someone's property and tell them they can't sell it, you know. And they wouldn't buy it.
I think the issue would be.
I think the issue is that if somebody buys it and it's just this swimming pool, nothing else.
But you can't get, you have to get an updated CO. But you can't get an updated CO if there's no residents on the property.
Okay, okay. So we're saying the same thing.
Right. Yeah, that's right. Thank you.
Okay, I have no problem.
All right.
Is there anyone in line that wanted to comment on this application? We should ask Jason.
We had one caller.
Yeah, I assume that Jason will tell us when, if a caller comes in.
We had one additional caller that was on the line and we unmuted them during the previous hearing. And no one was there, two of the best of our knowledge, and then they hung up. So I wrote it in our, so, yeah, that's about it. Currently, there's no one else on the line.
Okay.
All right, Chris Menardi?
Yeah, we've done this before for a property up in Georgica and I don't have any problem with this either. So it's okay.
Yeah, it's a young family with kids. They want their own swimming pool. And they, you know, probably don't want to merge the properties for financial reasons. So.
I'm okay.
It's certainly not going to hurt the neighborhood. And it's not, it's not substantial. So is there anybody else who wants to talk about this?
No, but I just want to say that this went off very well. Again, you know, compliments to everyone for indulging and keeping me busy. I thought I was going to be on the screen, Beth, for some reason. So I got all dressed up. I got out of my swimming trunks, Beth.
You only have to worry about the top half, Lenny.
Lenny, you had a monopoly on today.
You said you're still in Florida.
Yeah. You had swim trunks, but we have pajamas to get out of, so, you know. Is there a motion to close?
Thanks, everyone. Thank you, everyone.
Is there a motion to close the hearing on Hunting Lane?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And now, is there a motion to close the meeting?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody. Good job.